The meeting will come to order. Please take your seats. Good evening, and welcome to the October 29th Special Town Meeting. I am Tim Goddard, your moderator. Every town meeting must be called pursuant to a warrant issued by the Select Board. Hearing no objection, I will forego the reading of the warrant and begin by reviewing the return of service. I have inspected the Special Town Meeting warrant and have determined it was properly executed by the Select Board and served by a Constable of the Town of Littleton. We are now in session. And as is customary, we'll begin with the Pledge to the Flag. If everyone will please stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Also, as part of our opening ceremony, if you will, we've been graced in the past by Mia Clements, a student at Littleton High School that has led us in the National Anthem. And I believe she's here again. So we'll turn it over to you, Mia. Thank you. Please rise again.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, thank you, Mia. Okay, as people are finding their seats, just a few preliminary matters. First, I'd just like to make a brief recognition, if I may. I think when we last met for the annual town meeting, we did not, at that point, have a permanent fire chief, however we do now. And I'd like to introduce you, who may not know him, and I know a lot of you do, but Fire Chief Steel McCurdy is in the back of the room. Steel? Good to have you back. Okay. Some preliminary matters, obviously. Please check in at the registration tables and pick up a copy of the town meeting booklet and the amendment handout sheet for tonight, which is in pink. Because this will contain all the motions that will be voted this evening. Non-voters, please sit in the section you were directed to by the clerk's team in the back. And no non-voters may speak without the permission of the moderator, with the exception of town employees and consultants to the town. There are emergency exits in the front and in the rear, should it become necessary, to use them. Formal presentations to town meeting are 10 minutes long, as many as 10 minutes long. Speaking during debate is three minutes per voter, and you can't speak twice on the same article. We have a rule of we enter into no new business after 10:30 PM unless town meeting agrees, and town meeting usually wants to get the meeting over with at that point, and we sometimes we continue. But we put it to you. When you do speak, please use a center microphone. Please wait to be recognized, state your name and address for the record. And remember, all questions should come through the moderator to be directed to the individual you want to address it to. There are yellow amendment sheets for long written amendments, if you will, to any of the articles. If anyone is inclined to use them, please put your amendment in writing. And please, no rude or disrespectful remarks or direct references to a previous speaker. It sometimes comes up that people want to call the question, and I understand that, but please use the microphone to do so, and make that be the only comment you make on that trip to the microphone. You can't give a speech and then say, oh, by the way, I called the question, because that's kind of, that's kind of not in the spirit of town meeting. I'll also say that town officials who wish to express personal views should identify they are speaking as an individual and not as a member of that board. Tonight, we're going to, for the second time, we're going to use our electronic voting system. And you all received a small handheld device when you entered the gym. And if you were here in May, I think you probably remember how it works. And if not, we'll go over it quickly, and I think we may even have a practice vote, just so that everyone gets used to it. When we declare voting open, you can press either 1 for yes or 2 for no, green or red. And you've got the entire, we're going to start with 30 seconds. You've got that entire amount of time to decide how you want to vote. In fact, you can vote one way, change your mind, and as long as you're within that voting period, you can press the button again. The last button that you press will be the vote that's recorded. And we found that it did save some time, and we think it will save some in the future. And I think we're going to have just a short practice test. Madam Clerk, is that correct? Do we have the question for the voters?
Yep.
So what is it? It's the question, do you like ice cream? How about that?
[laughter]
Okay. Well, we don't need 40 seconds, but. So go ahead and press the yes or the no button, and we'll. When the voting period, so far, as you can see, some 200 people have voted. I don't know how many we have here. We might get a count on who, how many people are in the building. At the end of the voting period, we'll see how many yeses and how many nos. It's like maybe 217, I guess. Can we reveal the count on that? Okay. Yeah, 181 in favor and 36 opposed, for a total of 217. We'll do that on each of the articles, and there'll be a short period of time to vote or change your vote, as the case may be. We're also going to employ the use tonight of the consent calendar, which is something that we've used in the past to bundle together articles that are non-controversial, routine, necessary business of the town meeting, to save more time for the articles that people really have come to debate and to weigh in on. So I'll read through the list of the articles. You probably can see there are 12 articles on the warrant. I'm going to recommend eight articles be voted as part of the consent calendar. And the articles, well, you'll see the ones that we're going to recommend, but more importantly, the articles that are not part of this procedure, and we will hear them in their entirety, would be Article 1, the report of the Shaker Lane School Building Committee; Article 4, the supplemental funding for tennis courts and renovation of Whitcomb Field. There you see the slide now. Article 5, zoning bylaw amendment regarding marijuana; and Article 10, to transfer the care, custody, and control of Lot 107A at the Nagog Hill Orchard to the Conservation Commission. So those are not included in what we're about to read to you. So we'll go back. These are the articles that are going to be on the consent calendar, and they are. Article 2, bills of prior years requires a nine-tenths vote of town meeting, so nearly a unanimous vote. Article 3, to amend Article 11 of the October 17th, 2020 Special Town Meeting. Article 6, to amend Article 23 of the May 7th, 2024 Annual Town Meeting, to add a Schedule D Fire Department non-call salary schedule. Article 7, amend Article 4 of the November 2023 Special Town Meeting. Article 8, rescind and reprogram prior capital town meeting warrant articles. Article 9, to amend Article 12 of the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Number 11, to fund a collective bargaining agreement. And 12, to authorize the town clerk to fix Scrivener's errors to town bylaws rather adopted at town meeting. Does anyone wish to hold on any of those articles?
Hold on 2.
Hold on number 2. Any other articles? Okay. Okay, well, then we'll accept the motion to approve the consent calendar inclusive of Articles 3, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12. Do I hear such a motion?
Moved.
So moved and seconded. Okay. All right. Here's your first opportunity to check your clickers out. All those in favor of approving those articles that I listed, not Article 2, we're going to go back to that one. All those in favor of approving those articles, please signify by pressing either yes or Is that time? Time to vote, and we'll see what the total was. There were 228 ballots cast, 221 in favor, 7 opposed, and the consent agenda articles are passed. So now, we obviously, we've got five articles remaining on the warrant, and we'll start in numerical order. We're going to go to Article 1, the report of the Shaker Lane Building Committee. And before we get into that article, I just want to remind you that this article is to hear the report of the Shaker Lane Building Committee, and that's literally the scope of the article before town meeting. There will not be a question and answer period, and there won't be extended debate. It's simply to notify you as to what is going on, to give a progress report of sorts, and to point you toward a couple of public forums that will be held in the near future, at which you can ask all of the questions that come to mind regarding this project. So this is courtesy to the voters to give you a heads-up that this is now an ongoing project. And unfortunately, we won't have a lot of back and forth. We won't have any back and forth on that today. But the committee does have 10 minutes to make a presentation, and it's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to hear the report of the Shaker Lane School Building Committee. And we'll take this on a voice vote. All those in favor of hearing that report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Okay, that is unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, please record that. And now, all that's remaining to satisfy the article is for the town to hear that report of the Shaker Lane School Building Committee. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, and thank you to everyone for allowing us to present tonight on behalf of the Shaker Lane Building Committee. I'm Michelle Kane, the Principal of the Shaker Lane School. Presenting along with me tonight will be Mary Lee Mercy from Studio G Architects, Steve Vanoudy from our Finance Committee, that is also part of our Shaker Lane Building Committee, and Justin McCarthy, Chair of our School Committee. Dr. Clenchey, Superintendent of Schools, sends his regards, as he was unable to attend this evening. While we're not able to accept questions tonight during our 10-minute presentation, please know that at the end of our presentation, we will be sharing some opportunities during the month of November for you to come and tour the school, ask questions, have an informal session, as well as, on your way out or throughout the evening, we have some index cards with questions and a comment box, question box, that you are welcome to fill out tonight. We do encourage the town members here tonight to get involved in this process by reading the handout provided to you when you came in. And then if I could direct you to our presentation. Thank you. These are the goals for tonight's presentation that we will be speaking to. And next slide, please. So we wanted to start with the why, and the best way to share this tonight is to show you a little bit about where we are at Shaker Lane. So we started back in 1969 with our original construction, and in 1997, we had a renovation. Here we are 30 years later. So if you look at the top-left picture, you'll see a picture of our current cafeteria with some partitions that currently hold our English Language Learner, our multilingual learner classroom. So that classroom is on the stage in our cafeteria in between sessions of lunch periods. So during lunch periods, no academic sessions can be provided for these students. If you look to the right of that in the middle, our kitchen is too small. We have 445 students at Shaker Lane. School lunch is now free, as mandated by the Department of Education, and we have one way to serve the children, lunch. So you will often see, if you've been to Shaker Lane, you'll see a pile of children down the hallway, because we have one entrance and one egress in our cafeteria. Below that, you will see a picture of where our food is stored, which is not currently in our kitchen, it's in our loading dock. So when our cafeteria staff has to get food, they have to leave the kitchen, go out into the loading dock that also stores salt and other materials to get the food needed to prepare for the students. On the bottom left is just an aerial view of that classroom that is currently being held on the stage in our cafeteria. And the last picture on the right is a picture of our, that is our music classroom, that has no windows. It's a tiny room. It used to be a conference room that we turned into music. Music last year used to be on the stage in the cafeteria, which acoustically, it was just too much for the children, too much for the students and for the teachers. On the top left, you'll see a picture of our Speech and Language Pathologist. You can kind of see the word conference to the right of that. That was a conference room that we repurposed to be a service providing area for our students with disabilities. So that is also a classroom, well, it's a closet, that is turned into a service area, no windows. Down below that, you will see a storage closet that's been repurposed to house our BCBA, our Board Certified Behavior Analyst. On the top, you'll see our Special Education Administrator is in also another closet that we've repurposed to try and give this woman a space as she goes between Shaker Lane and Russell Street. Down below, you'll see our Assistant Principal Room, another room, again, without windows. That is her space. And on the top right, you'll see a picture of our makeshift workspace for staff. So our staff don't have a room to go to to copy materials, to prepare materials. There's a small space behind the stage in our gymnasium, so when the children are having gym, the teachers can go behind there and use a copy, copier, a cutter, but that is on the first floor, so this is where our staff on the second floor make copies. Next slide, please. Just really quickly, these are all of the partners and the Shaker Lane Project members. You're going to hear from Mary Lee tonight, who is with our Studio G Architects, and she'll talk a little bit next about the Mass School Building Authority that we are partnered with at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, or the MSBA, as we call it all the time, is a quasi-independent government agency in the state of Massachusetts. It partners with communities across the state to help fund public school projects. The MSBA helps make sure that new public school projects are educationally appropriate, that they are cost-effective and sustainable. They assist communities with funding based on a few different qualities of each community, based on wealth and poverty, and a bunch of factors go into that. So that's just a quick update on the MSBA. They have a process that all school projects go through, and it begins with discussions in the district. Littleton began back in 2018 with really talking about whether or not to get into the MSBA pipeline. They submitted a statement of interest in 2018, and the MSBA said, no, it was not chosen. So they waited another couple of years and then applied again, and that time they were accepted. So since then, they've established the project team, which is Studio G Architects, and the owner's project manager, which is Turner Townsend and Hiri. Right now, we are in what's called Module 3, which is feasibility study. We're about halfway through that, and then we'll go into schematic design. After that, there's a big stop, in which case there is a vote in the town on this project, whether or not to fund it. And if it gets funded, then we proceed through the rest of this process, going into more detailed design and then construction, with an estimated move into the new facility in fall of 2028. Then it goes on another year or so of doing site work and project closeout. That town vote, there's two components to it. First, there's a special town meeting, and that would take place in the fall of 2025. That requires a two-thirds vote to pass whether to allow the town to extend the debt. Then the second part of that vote is a debt exclusion vote, and that would take place soon after that town meeting, and it just requires a simple majority. So a little bit of the design process that we've gone through. We looked at 62 different sites that are owned by the Town of Littleton, and of those 62 sites, we found six that could possibly work. Those included several sites on the existing Shaker Lane campus, as well as the field here on this middle school and elementary school campus. Those six were then narrowed down into three options, one addition renovation, and then two new construction options. And by the end of, the end of schematic, or sorry, the end of feasibility, we will have one preferred solution to move forward with. A little closer look at those three options, you can see they're all sort of drawn together there on the Shaker Lane campus. The blue is the addition renovation, where we have a substantial addition of mostly classrooms plus a gymnasium, and then the part of the school that's left over would be renovated. The other two options are new construction options, either on the upper field or the lower field, and both of those could be completed while the existing school remains in session. All right, so everybody wants to know how much it's going to cost. As of right now, the estimated, and this is estimated, cost of the project would be in the range of $92.2 million to $104.2 million, which is a lot. So we thought it would be helpful to show you how this compares to other school projects that have recently been estimated through the MSBA. These six other schools up here show projects that have received their schematic design estimate since December of 2023. And if you compare the numbers, you can see that we're sort of in the middle of the pack there. And then if you consider that there has been substantial construction escalation since December 2023, if you add around $50 a square foot to those earlier numbers, then it's more of an apples-to-apples comparison. This presentation will be available on the project website, so you can have more time to really look at these numbers and understand them. But I will pass it over to Steve Vanoudy to dive more into the numbers.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Steve Vanoudy, Finance Committee Representative on the Building Committee. Mr. Moderator, I apologize in advance if we're going to go over our time here. You heard about the three options that we have on the table right now for this project. Of course, the range is from $92 to $104 million. We're expecting reimbursements in from the state for this project right now, currently at $27 to $34 million, which leaves the net cost of the town of $60 million to $75 million. That would be our responsibility. Because of the amount, the Finance Committee and the Select Board have already agreed that this needs to be a debt exclusion vote. Now, the town has had debt exclusion votes in the past. This building, the middle school, was a debt exclusion vote. The renovation at Russell Street was another debt exclusion. Construction of the police station was a third one. All those 20-year bonds that we issued at those times, they're running down, and they have just a couple of years left, so that remaining debt service will be off the town's books by the time this project hits, probably around FY '30. So one of the things that the committee felt was very important is to get tax information out to the public as early as possible in this project, and that's what we're here tonight to do. If you know anything about the Finance Committee, you know our estimates are always going to be conservative. You can see some of the things on the screen that we use in our estimates, and believe me, they are very conservative when we're coming up with these numbers. When the town places debt, the highest impact of that debt service will be in the very first year we issue. And as the term of the debt goes down and we pay down principal, that debt service and then the tax liability that goes along with it decreases over time. So the numbers that you see on the screen, the estimated first-year tax impact of $1,475 to $1,850, are the largest tax impacts that we're going to see on this project. And I can tell you, those are very conservative numbers, and they're based on FY '24 values. And one of the things is today, this afternoon, for example, the state certified our FY '25 values. So those numbers have already changed, and the good news is they've gotten down lower. As property values go up, tax impact goes down. One of the things that we hope to do on this is provide a tax impact calculator. The slide says before the FY, before the 2025 vote, but I can tell you that that calculator should be up on the town's website, probably early in calendar year 2025. This project has a lot of moving parts right now. The tax estimates that we have are based on estimated costs. Those three options are going to be whittled down to one option in December. And over the course of 2025, we'll learn more about the exact numbers of the reimbursements from the MSBA. We're going to refine the cost of the project itself as those drawings are done and recosted, and property values will again change, and they're going to change four more times before we place this debt. Most important thing with that estimated first-year tax impact is it's based on the single tax rate. Littleton is one of the few communities, or handful of communities, in the state that has a split tax rate. And a split tax rate, the residential property owner pays less than the single rate, and the commercial property owner pays more. So you can see that that's, again, very conservative nature, these numbers. We're quoting a single tax rate. But that tax calculator that we're going to have up on the website will take into account all these changes in the estimates and help us move forward to this project. So by the time the vote comes this time next year, we'll have all the information we need. And Justin from the School Committee will get us on the next steps that we're going to go through.
Okay, thank you. We're a little over time, but I don't think it's fair not to hear from Mr. McCarthy.
This will just be 30 seconds. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Justin McCarthy from the School Committee, great presentation. Great presentation, lot of information, probably like drinking water from a fire hose. We do have a couple of dates that we'd like you to take note of. That's a QR code, so if you pull your phone out and you hover over that, you'll get linked directly to the website where more information will be coming available. But the point here is community outreach. We're not asking for your vote, we're not taking questions, but what we are going to do is we'd like to hear from you on November 13th, November 19th, and any additional dates that the community needs. So if you say, I can't meet until December, January, as new information comes out, as the project gets more fine-tuned, there will be a number of opportunities to hear from our residents. The school committees ask, although all five school committee members support the project, our ask is that citizen to citizen, we just have an informed vote a year from now, and that's likely just going to take a little bit of everybody's time, stay informed. The newsletter that comes out through the town will have information. There's a website dedicated directly for this. We definitely want to hear from everyone. That's the point about this. It's a big project. It's the biggest project we've ever had. The numbers right now are very conservative and quite large, but we want to make sure that we hear from everyone, and everyone feels that they are well-informed when it's time to vote a year from now. That is our goal. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. And thank you to the School Building Committee. Sure, it's okay to oblige. They will be back at a future town meeting. We are now going to move to Article Two. We had a hold on that in the consent calendar. It's a bill of a prior year, requires a nine-tenths vote, because this is a special town meeting. And you can see that there is one invoice from a vendor. Usually, these are timing issues as far as the non-payment goes. It's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant, and you'll see the Select Board and Finance Committee both recommend this article. So who had the hold on Article Two? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Daryl Baker-Grismill. I actually don't object to the amount being billed. I objected to really it being a part of the consent agenda, since that has a nine-tenths requirement. Excuse me, none of the other articles had such a high threshold that I think it put those articles in jeopardy.
That's a good point to make. That would have made everything a nine-tenths vote.
Exactly. So that's my concern, and I express that to the moderator to consider for next future consent agendas.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Okay. And we'll use the clicker, since we need a precise quantum of the vote here. All those in favor of Article Two, bills of prior years signify by pressing either yes or no on your clicker during the next 30 seconds. And this requires a nine-tenths vote to pass. So we'll test our math skills as to whether we have a nine-tenths majority. Okay, I think the voting period is over. We close the vote. 236 votes cast. 228 in favor and eight opposed, and the 90% majority is achieved, and Article Two is passed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I have a point of order, sir.
Yes. To what point of order do you rise, Mr. Gerber?
Article 10, sir, in the order of the articles.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to inform the town meeting that the Conservation Commission is not going to move Article 10, given that it's at the end of the agenda. Some folks may be interested in knowing that. We are not moving it tonight because the Select Board needs to vote that piece of property as surplus before the motion in that article can take effect. The Select Board has chosen not to do that tonight, and so there's no legal effect of Article 10 yet until they choose to do so. We will, we, the Conservation Commission, intend to bring that forward in six months, in the spring. But the folks here might want to know that Article 10.
Okay. Thank you for that courtesy to those town meeting voters who might have been hanging around for Article 10. The Conservation Commission has announced they will not be moving that article because the condition precedent to that transfer, the Select Board's vote of surplus declaration on that property has not yet occurred. So both things have to happen, and in that order, so it will be in the springtime, and you'll town meeting more than likely when that article will reappear on the warrant. So thank you very much. We'll move then to Article Four, and there's a revised motion for Article Four, and it's on your pink amendment handout. So if you refer to that rather than your booklet. This is an amendment to a previous vote at town meeting for funding for the middle school tennis courts and the renovation of Wickham Field. And we have a presentation from both Parks and Rec, and I, well, I think we might hear from CPA as well. But so it's been moved and seconded by the CPA Committee that the town vote to take the following actions, and the words are verbatim, what is on, what is printed in the pink amendment handout for the October 29th, 2024 town meeting. I don't propose to read it to you. We'll now hear the presentation on Article Four. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Saul Marini. I am Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission. The project we're bringing to you today is both the replacement of tennis courts that were taken out as part of the new senior center being developed, as well as some realignment of playing fields to give us a better use of those fields. And our Assistant Director of the Park and Rec Department will be presenting the details of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Saul. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the Littleton Parks Recreation and Community Education Department, joined by Director Alicia Day, Chairman Saul Marini, and LPS Athletic Director Mike Lynn. The goal of our project is simple. It's to expand and improve recreational spaces that meet both current and future needs for Littleton schools, youth, recreation programs, and public use. This project aligns with past recommendations and ongoing capital requests, fulfilling objectives from the 2017 Master Plan and the 2016 and 2024 Open Space and Recreation Plans. We aim to sustainably expand Littleton's recreational facilities, address current usage needs, and support our community's growth. This project serves two key purposes: preserving and expanding recreational spaces. Specifically, we aim to construct four new tennis courts and rehabilitate Wickham Baseball Field. By doing so, we will utilize the existing high school courts, like the former Town Hall Courts. By relocating the 90-foot baseball diamond, we will add year-round usable grass field space behind the high school. This project has a projected total cost of $1,034,000. CPC funds will cover nearly all expenses, including design, permitting, bidding, and construction. Funding has been identified as follows. CPC funds totaling $1,018,350 from the recreation bucket. The CPC recreation bucket, $700,000. An LELW gift to the CPC in the amount of $200,000. And a May 7th, 2024 transfer from the town to the CPC recreation bucket in the amount of $118,350. As approved tonight in Article Eight, we are going to reappropriate unused capital funds in the amount of $15,650 to fully fund this project. The cost breakdown is as follows: professional services and administration, $112,000; new tennis courts, $600,000; the Wickham Field rehabilitation, $320,000; and we've built in a 20% contingency to include unforeseen expenses. Objective number one is the construction of four new tennis courts at the Littleton Middle School location, located to the right of the middle school driveway. These courts will enhance tennis offerings for both high school and community use. Relocating the high school tennis courts will allow for the current high school courts to serve as a cost-effective replacement to the former Town Hall Courts. Adjacent to the courts nearest the middle school gym, a small grass soccer field will In August 2024, Littleton Public Schools completed maintenance on the high school tennis courts, with cracked ceiling, repainting, and relining of both tennis and pickleball courts. The $37,000 investment revitalized this space, making it equivalent to the former Town Hall Courts. When the Recreation Department moves to 56 King Street in March, these courts will be conveniently located nearby, revitalizing the recreation programming and public use of both tennis and pickleball programs. Objective number two of this project is to rehabilitate Wickham Field to support Littleton's 90-foot baseball games. Improvements will bring the field to the quality of jet softball field, with a 360-degree fence, parking lot safety netting, dugouts, on-deck circles, bullpens, and bleachers. Rehabilitating Wickham Field will allow us to permanently relocate the 90-foot baseball field from the high school. This change, which we just piloted in the fall, allows the opportunity for three, with the potential for a fourth field at the high school year round. Additionally, it enables the rotation and rest of fields to maintain optimal conditions. This slide displays the cost of all of the projects if completed separately. It estimates for the tennis and, the estimates for the tennis and pickleball courts are based on 2023 numbers, while the field creation of the new soccer and lacrosse field and the rehabilitation of Wickham Field come from a 2017 Fields Need Assessment. 2024 projected estimates for these 2017 projections are in the parentheses below. Using these previous figures, combining these projects offers a streamlined, cost-effective plan. By integrating them, we project a low-end savings of approximately $1.75 million over the process of all the projects. In addition to CPC funding, we are actively pursuing grants to reduce costs further. We've applied for and been preliminary granted up to $55,000 from the United States Tennis Association, and submitted an application to Major League Baseball's Youth Development Foundation. During the initial planning phases, we will work with DPW and other town departments to identify additional cost-saving measures. We are also partnering with Littleton Youth Sports for contributions, underscoring community support, and our commitment to exploring all of the funding options possible. This project has garnered support from numerous stakeholders, including Littleton Public School Athletics and the youth sports organizations. It is also recommended by the Littleton Park and Rec Commission, Littleton School Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board. This project will impact so many groups in the town of Littleton, and their backing speaks to the broad community interest and the benefit that it represents. In closing, this project marks a significant step forward in Littleton's recreational offerings. From new tennis courts to enhanced field space, this initiative brings cost savings, community support, and solid funding plan. We are grateful to Mike Lynn, the Littleton Public School Athletic Director, our youth organization, town employees, community members, and the public for their contributions to this plan. Thank you all for your time and support. We look forward to making this vision a reality with your help.
Thank you very much. Before we open up the floor, do debate, do any boards or committees have an opinion they'd like the Select Board or Finance Committee, either one, like to weigh in this? Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Dave McManus, speaking on behalf of Littleton Youth Baseball and Softball. LYBS fully supports Article Four. The Babe Ruth Program through LYBS, which is for kids ages 13-plus, plays at Wickham Field. Additionally, the use of Wickham Field for the high school varsity and JV baseball programs provides a fundamental connection between the youth baseball and the field. Many kids and families make their way over to the field after other sports and activities, and it provides a central and highly-used location for baseball viewership. Making the proposed improvements to Wickham Field will have both a direct and an indirect benefit to the youth of Littleton. The project has additional benefits, as described, because it frees up space at the high school for additional soccer fields, which aids our friends at Littleton Youth Soccer. We like this because it helps youth soccer, but it also helps to preserve Wickham Field for multi-season baseball use. Finally, I will note that LYBS has been the beneficiary of some incredibly generous fundraising over recent years, and the LYBS Board is actively seeking ways in which we can put those funds to work. If Article Four passes tonight, the LYBS Board has committed to evaluate options to financially contribute to the project as proposed or to fund additional improvements. In closing, going forward with these improvements enables Wickham Field to become the home of Littleton baseball for years to come. LYBS is excited to see this Wickham Field project come to fruition and asks everyone here to support and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Mr. Moderator, first, I wanted to commend the Park and Rec and their board for a fine job that they laid out here on how this stuff is going to be paid for. It is probably one of the best proposals, telling us how it's going to be paid, and you're not going to have to go out and borrow money to pay for it. We got the money to do it. Is that right? Through you to the finance. Is that right? We have the money. Okay? So I'm going to tell you right now that there's no reason why we shouldn't put this in place and do what needs to be done for every citizen here in the town of Littleton. You deserve this. These people have worked hard, and they've done a superb job. And I thank them for the time and effort that they've put in here in doing this, and we here tonight will receive the benefit of it once this is developed. So please, tonight, vote for this as a yes, because you deserve something for yourself for the dollars that you're paying in taxes to the town of Littleton. You deserve that. And I'm here to tell you, you deserve both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
My name is Amy Tarlo Lewis, and I just have a question, I know, for Park and Rec and all the other people who run sports around here. Is there currently any program in place today that serves neurodiverse kids or kids with physical disabilities?
That's a really great question. So currently, we do not.
So this project doesn't support every one of the community?
Well, not necessarily. So one of the things that...
But there's no programming in place, and there never has been.
Yeah, the questions have to come through the moderator before they're directed to an individual? Yeah, I think we get it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So as someone who is neurodiverse, this is something that we are very passionate on looking forward to and being able to do it. The challenges that we have are that we are a town of six, or sorry, a team of six, my apologies. So for us to be able to try to work into the world of getting therapeutic recreation, while it's something we would love to do, the size of our town and the funding that we get does not allow us to do that at this time. We are trying to work with other towns. We're very close with Lexington and Danvers, who have amazing therapeutic recreation programs. So we are trying to see what we're able to do and collaborate. So we are trying to see what we're able to do and collaborate with those other communities.
There are so many towns around us who, and families who have no access, no programmings, no camps, no soccer game, like nothing, they have nothing all summer, and you've had years to develop programming, and you could have formed alliances with these towns years ago. I mean, all these families are looking for it. Like if you seize the market, like you could build it. I'm not sure why you've waited so long.
I hear you, and it is honestly, at the end of the day, even with Lexington, they've just hired on their new therapeutic recreation specialist in the past two to three years. So it is something that is slowly, unfortunately, is slowly starting to gain popularity and support. So that is something, like I said, that's one of our goals, that we want to really try to see what options we're able to be able to offer within the finances that we have available to us.
It's not a popularity issue. It's the market has always been there. These families have always been there.
Yes, sir.
Ed Foltz, 619 Newtown Road. And while I am very much in favor of us having athletic facilities and sporting facilities and so on and so forth, the program, the proposal that was brought here is almost $3 million. Everybody keeps saying 1.7 million, but your adjusted numbers were 2.7 something, almost $3 million.
That's what we would be saving.
No, that's how much the proposal showed that it was going to cost, because you were using 2023 figures.
So, oh, I'm sorry, guys. I'm going way too far.
Oh, marijuana, that's nice. We don't want that either, but my, the point I'm trying to make is, the school committee brought to us a proposal that Mr. Van Ude already said is potentially going to add 1,800 to, who knows, $2,000 a year to our taxes. That, for me, is $125, $150 a month, you know? And I am not making any more money now than I was before, and I won't be making much more money in the future. So if we keep bringing these big proposals together, and I'm not saying that people won't like to have it.
No.
I'm just saying, we don't have unlimited funds. The Finance Committee says we have the money. Okay, so we spend the money here, that means we don't have the money to put on this $100 million school they want to build, or, you know, we didn't use the money to save money on the senior center, or we've got projects galore. I have projects galore in my own home as well. I don't have the money to do them all. And that's the point, I guess, I'm trying to make. We don't have the money to do everything. I can't afford more taxes. A lot of the seniors in this town cannot afford more taxes. We're not a town that has people making millions of dollar salaries. The houses may suggest otherwise. The more you put on here, and I'm not, again, I'm not saying this isn't a nice thing to have, but in my mind, it's a nice thing to have. We have tennis courts over at the high school. We have baseball fields. We've got the facilities, we've got the programs being serviced, maybe not in the nice fancy places that we might like to have. We might like to have a million-dollar facility, but we can't afford it. That's the point I'm trying to make. We don't have the money. And if somebody doesn't say no once in a while, then I may as well sell my property and move, because I won't be able to afford the taxes, and Mr. Van Ude will take it from me. So, you know, this, I'm asking folks to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker?
I'm sorry. I was just going to go to the Finance Committee right now, and then we'll go back to you.
So just to, oh, sorry, Steve.
Finance Committee first, and then, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Van Ude, Chair of the Finance Committee. The dollars that the Park and Rec Commission is talking about tonight are dollars that we've already paid in taxes and deposited into the CPA fund. Those funds are dedicated to certain buckets. And remember, at the last town meeting, we used the open space bucket to purchase some open space property. These funds are sitting in the recreation bucket. They have to be used for active recreation, and this is a great project to utilize those funds, which I earmark totally for those. I totally agree with the resident who said that we need to start watching our dollars as we spend, but these are funds that have already been taxed, we've already paid it, and they are set aside specifically for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve has it, as always.
Okay. All right, yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, Brad Lang, 76 New Estate Road. I am on behalf of the Littleton Soccer Board. I've been on the board for almost 10 years, and when I started, we were running about 400, 450 kids each spring and fall season. Our numbers have grown. Our numbers are now up close to 600 per season in spring and 600 for the fall. Last year, we didn't have enough soccer field space. We had to go and rent from Teamworks and Acton some space to provide enough practice fields, because Littleton couldn't provide enough soccer space and field space for practices. This project, going over with Tim and with baseball and moving the baseball field to Wickham, allows us to use the entire high school property up behind the high school for soccer. And as Tim said, we kind of tested that out this season, and it made a big impact on how much space we had, so we can provide for our kids and our players. So Littleton Soccer is definitely in favor of this, because it really helps us out with field space, and I would ask that everybody vote yes on this as well. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jenny Boyer, 18 Boxborough Road. First of all, I want to commend the work on this. For a long time, I have felt like the fields needed, the field in town needed an upgrade, especially as our son did baseball and we traveled around, and then we would play at our own home field. I was like, wow, we could really use this. So first of all, I think it's great that we're doing this. The thing that I have a question about is the reach of the control over these different facilities that Park and Recs has. I personally tried to do something personal with my family at a tennis court during a time that no one was using them, and these fine people from Park and Rec came out and tried to control what we were doing and actually kicking us off and telling us we couldn't use it. And then when we paid money that they wanted for services to clean off the courts and things like that, they didn't do it. And then when we went in and said, we need the courts cleaned off, they were like, well, we're too small, you need to do that. And I was like, well, but isn't that what you just made us pay you privately for? So it concerns me that the tennis courts for public use will be so close to the new Park and Rec building, because there will be so much oversight. And in talking with other people around town, too, they've also run into the same situation that they're trying to use the public, these public facilities, but feel like Park and Rec is really like taking a large control over that. And so my question is, like, number one, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that, and maybe, maybe I am the only one that feels this way, but it was a huge problem for us, and it does seem to be others. So that was my question.
Okay. Park and Rec?
Yeah, so as the Director of Parks and Recreation, this is the first time that I've heard of this, so I apologize if that was your experience. The fields that we have or the tennis courts, there is, if you do want to be able to use the courts at a specific time, you can rent them. Otherwise, if there's programming, obviously, we have programming that's happening, but when the, there is not programming that's happening, or they're not rented, they are completely open to the public. So again, I'm sorry that that was your experience. I would be happy to sit down and chat with you and try to, I honestly do not remember having that conversation, so I do apologize. But if you do want to come in and we can chat through that, I would be happy to spend that time with you.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move forward. I think we're ready to take a vote, and I will point out, as was mentioned earlier, the revised motion no longer contains any language regarding a borrowing, so the quantum of vote required to pass is not two-thirds any longer, it's a simple majority, since the funding is in hand and no borrowing is contemplated, so. All right, all those in favor of the motion as printed in your pink amendment handout, please signify by pressing yes on your clicker, and those opposed, press no, and you'll have 30 seconds now to, well, maybe a little more than 30 seconds, according to the clock, to register your vote, and a majority is required for passage. Do I know what the clock's at? Okay, we're going to close the vote. Yeah, there were, out of 251 votes cast, 215 in favor, 36 opposed, and the motion passes by the necessary majority vote. Thank you very much, and I declare that a vote. Madam Clerk, we'll move on then to Article Five, which will give people who are primarily interested in tennis courts and ball fields to take their leave quietly. Article Five is a rather comprehensive zoning bylaw amendment regarding registered marijuana dispensaries and adult-use marijuana establishments. As always, a zoning amendment requires a two-thirds vote. And the motion is in your town meeting booklet, and it runs throughout nine or 10 pages, starting on page seven, Article Five. And it's been moved and seconded by the Planning Board that the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant, so just as is printed in your handout, including the attached zoning map. I will report to you that the Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed bylaw changes on August the 1st, and at the conclusion of that hearing, the Planning Board voted five to zero to support bringing those changes to you at town meeting. So that satisfies the requirement for the public hearing, and we now will have a presentation from the Planning Board on the zoning bylaw amendment. Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Hello, Jeff Yates from the Planning Board. We're here proposing this zoning bylaw amendment for two reasons. One is housekeeping. The Littleton first adopted and became a marijuana community about 10 years ago, and after that, over the years, there have been many changes in the state supervisory regulations. So it was a project to bring our zoning code up to the standards of the state, mainly having to do with the way certain businesses were referred to, et cetera. We actually started that a couple years ago, and we had other intervening issues that we had to deal with.
Excuse me, if you could get closer to the microphone, that would be great. Yeah, thank you.
So then, at the same time, we had a series of public hearings about an existing business in town that's a cultivator. We had a huge outpouring of citizen response to these hearings, and it became evident to us that we need to include this issue of cultivation in our town in this bylaw amendment. Right now, there is, I'm gonna see what this is, wrong direction. Right now, there is unlimited cultivation in town. And that, given that the one cultivation site we have was the subject of so many complaints.
Excuse me, Jeff, can we, either get closer to it or move it up a little higher?
Okay.
Or hold it? Yeah, thanks.
Given that there were so many complaints on this one site, we felt that we should bring it before the town. We owed it to the people who came to our hearings about whether we would further restrict it. By law, we can't eliminate cultivation, but we can bring it down to one in four different categories. To eliminate cultivation would require a town-wide ballot at an election, and it's possible that that would be brought forward in the future. But with zoning, we can't completely eliminate it. One of the other things we found out in these hearings was, the issue is odor, and the odor has actually emanated in the growing process, and we, the applicant at the existing cultivation who was seeking to modify their building to address odor problems, we asked for odor control consultants, we got them, we had a great deal of education about the issue, and it's a difficult issue, and it requires almost perfect operation and very high-quality air handling systems. And so we felt in this amended bylaw, we want to mention odor control and to refer to best practices. So those were the main purposes of the amendment. At the same time, we amended the zoning maps to, we eliminated, the zoning maps followed two industrial zones, and we eliminated one of the industrial zones, Industrial B, which is not a very great area, and Industrial A remains. So a lot of the other, and why there's so many pages of it, has to do with, it deletes outdated definitions of registered marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana treatment centers. It refers to definitions, and as I said, the main issue that is before you tonight is to eliminate or limit the number of cultivation facilities. This shows, I'm sorry, this shows the four different types of cultivation that are allowed under our current bylaw, which would still be allowed. Adult-use marijuana cultivator, we would like to limit that to one. Medical marijuana treatment center, which is part of cultivation, we would like to limit that to one. The existing cultivation businesses in town has those two licenses, and so that cultivation is now established and taken care of. A craft marijuana cooperative, when I, when we and the board digs into it, we, our head spins, there is not one craft marijuana cooperative operating in the state. And a micro-business marijuana cultivator, which there are maybe about a dozen in the entire state, and they, it refers to the size of them as less than 5,000 square feet. So in terms of the maps, the main difference was along King Street going to Air. Between the railroad tracks and King Street was eliminated. The other zone, the zones that are indicated are existing, and there's much material on our website about this. We held public hearings in addition to the many public We held public hearings in addition to the many public hearings we held about the existing cultivator. So, a vote yes on this will bring our bylaw into conformance with the current Cannabis Control Commission requirements and it will limit cultivation to one cultivator in each of the four categories that I described and it will introduce odor control into the bylaw as a way of, if any further cultivation occurs, it's something that we can consider in our decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, before we start debate, just a word on the article. It's obviously a long and comprehensive bylaw and some of you may have good reasons to want to support it and to vote for it and others may have reservations with certain sections of it. I'm going to try to discourage amendments to the bylaw, or to resist the temptation rather, to fix areas of the bylaw that you think may be lacking. You can either vote for it or you can vote against it. The problem with amendments to long zoning bylaws is that sometimes the amendments, there are unintended consequences, it may be, it shows up in another section of the bylaw and there are inconsistent provisions and I'm, I'm not saying we wouldn't take any amendments, particularly if something is misspelled or mislabeled, misnumbered, that sort of thing, but I'm asking if town meeting would resist the temptation to try to fix something on the floor of town meeting that the planning board spent many months getting ready to present to you. So with that, we'll open it up to debate, to discussion and we'll hear from Brian.
Brian Tarbox, 16 Fletcher Lane, not speaking for the FinCom, just myself. I appreciate, Mr. Moderator, your comments about not trying to fix the provisions of this. The various boards at the front of the table heard these, heard the presentation from the planning board and we had various comments about wanting to fix things and basically we were told that wasn't really possible. When, when we heard this presentation, basically, we, this was described as a response to the odor issue and we understand that the odor issue is a real issue and it affects people and you have to understand that this bylaw will have no effect on the odor issue at the current facility. Planning board laws are not retroactive, so if you think this will fix the current problem, it won't. Planning board acknowledges that it won't fix the current problem. We asked for, this is an amendment to a bylaw, yet we've had in advance no written description of the actual set of changes and when we asked the, the planning board about the fact that you'd be coming here without a written description of the changes, we were told by the planning board, and I quote, "Town meeting members can't be expected to understand this bylaw." I find that disrespectful and simply for that, I would vote this down. I think this issue, this bylaw has many problems. We don't have the time to go into what the problems are, but I suggest that we vote this down, tell the planning board to come back with a smaller, clearer article, or in fact, probably two. One that fixes all the technical challenges and then one that fixes the odors because this won't fix the problem and within the bounds of decorum, I don't like being told that I'm too stupid to understand the bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen, I've got 30 years in the nuclear biology chemical field and dealing with the environment, I know a whole lot about it because the people that made a complaint about the smell, I was always there at the planning board meeting. In addition, I wrote to EPA, DEP, and the CCCs. I sent two letters. EPA sent a letter back to me and said, "Mr. Sanders, because under the federal government, marijuana is not legal." So they said, "We're going to send the remarks that we have over to the DEP and the CCC because they're the ones that will have to fix this." Well, I have a draft right now because I haven't heard from them because they're in disarray up there now. They don't have a chair, so they really don't know what's going on up there. This industry was not invented with regards to odor. And it's true, by putting odor in there, you at the local level can put things in as long as don't be in conflict with the state requirement. That's why you have the odor information in there now. I'm hoping that we're going, that I'm going to get some information and I ask them to send some experts out here because right now, they don't tell us anything about this odor to include in the workplace and it should be because every worker has what is known is the right to know. So if they're working in the environment where there's a hazard, they should know what it is. Listen, the people that are in that area in the town of Littleton is being affected by the odor. We need to have concern for the people because, number one, if we don't care about them, we ain't going to care about others when we need to. And I care about the people there that are breathing that marijuana smell over there. As far as the changes go with the amendment here, some may disagree or not agree, but there are people in this town that's not agree with the fact of wanting more marijuana facilities in this town. On that note, I would say, if you don't want more, vote for it. Thank you.
Time, thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Jared Alpiari, New Estate Road. A couple of comments. I agree with the, the thing is, with zoning, pre-existing non-conforming, you can't force an existing business to conform to new zoning regs, so we're stuck with the odors. What this does is, it kind of, it caps the number of future problems. Also, in terms of odors, I would suspect that the Board of Health could do something about it if it's within their jurisdiction. I believe they can. But there's also one thing I noted in the wording and it's more of a typo. If you go into Section 173, 200, Section A2, about halfway down, they talk about an impassable barrier. About four, about four lines up from the bottom, they refer to it as an impossible barrier. So is that something that needs to be fixed by amendment or can you just correct it on the spot?
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment, planning board? Yes. Okay, so, impossible becomes impassable. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Rob Houston, 55 Jennifer Street. I support this article and I would urge the community to vote yes for it. We elected a planning board, they held public hearings, we've, they are the people that we, we trust to write this article. It's, it's complicated because it requires multiple changes that are required to comply with the CCC laws that have changed, okay? Things change and have changed over the last seven years. I trust that they've done that correctly and I don't need them to explain that to me and I think that we're losing sight of the forest for the trees here. We have an existing cultivator in town that, in my opinion, is a bad actor, okay? And it got, it got approved by our town and we're stuck with it. Right now, we have an unlimited number that can come into this town. They can put them in commercial buildings and, and we can't stop that, okay? For me, the fundamental thing here is stopping it. We want no more cultivators because I don't want more sanctuaries, okay? It's as simple as that, in my opinion. I trust that they did their job on all the big stuff that everybody's concerned about that want to, wanted to be explained. I moved to Littleton from Denver, Colorado. Living in Denver, Colorado with millions of, millions of leased square foot and indoor facilities rendered entire sections of that town uninhabitable by people because it smelt like marijuana. I don't want another marijuana facility in this cultivator, in this town. I don't care where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Ed Foltz, 619 Newtown Road. I agree with everyone that to be told by the planning board that they're smarter than us, we're too stupid to know what's being changed in here because the picture here that shows the, it says "proposed overlay district" has the Littleton Common having a district. Now, I was told this isn't being changed, we already have it, but I don't know because I don't have a picture of what it is today. So as far as I'm concerned, since this says "proposed overlay district," I'm asking everyone to reject this, this article so that they can come back and actually give us what are the changes and get rid of the overlay district on the common. You know, as much as I dislike the, the King Street facility and what have you, that's going to be all residential. So does that mean that we want to have our children living where they can simply walk over to the marijuana shop and get high on marijuana, you know? I, I'm an old guy, as far as I'm concerned, marijuana is an entry-level drug. My son disagrees with this, by the way. But we've been taught marijuana messes with your brain. They even know it now. They've proven that the long-term marijuana use is bad. We're encouraging marijuana use by having an overlay district in the common, you know? The, the high school kids, they go to the common after school sometimes, the apartments are going to have kids at the common. These districts, and again, the map says proposed, so I have to take this to be that these are proposed and not going to be, you know, that they're being changed to that. So because of that, I'm asking everyone to reject this. We should never allow marijuana in town where, apparently, everybody keeps telling us, "We're forced to do it, the state won't let us not," but let's make this really do what we want with explanation of what we're changing. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Michael Zeldin, Lowen Street. At the risk of, I'm trying to avoid discussing chemistry, but I'll just come to the chase and that is that, believe it or not, the molecules, the chemicals that annoy people, that people find objectionable are known. They've been known for over 10 years. So it's not all of this material, all the material that's exuded at certain times inevitably by marijuana, that's, there's nothing that can be done to stop it if you want to have marijuana, I'm not going to argue with that tonight. What concerns me is that in the statements of attempt to control the odor, odor, no mention is made of, not a method that's advanced, but a method that's been advancing since it was invented over 10 years ago. No mention is made of it and what concerns me, no mention or knowledge was made of it by the current applicant. So it concerns me that the planning board has a lot of work to do to become more proficient at meeting our community needs, at the same time satisfying the fact that we are, as has been pointed out, stuck with, in the view of many, with marijuana. So I, I am urging that we reject this and ask the planning board to basically make some effort, expend some resources and become somewhat more proficient. They've reached a new level of achievement, let's go to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir? Yes, ma'am.
Erica Pogorny, 6 Fox Lane. I support this mostly because I want to limit the number. It's clear that they have become a nuisance. I go to my vet and you walk in and the smell hits you immediately. I can't imagine working in that building all day long. But what really bothers me is the towns throwing their hands up to the odor and saying, "Well, they're here, we can't do anything about it." It is a nuisance, we should be able to do something about it. For Patriot Beverages, for, stinks all the time. For months, I kept records about every time it stunk, every, you know, and, and sent it to town officials and nothing was ever done. These, these odors are nuisances to the town. They, they inhibit our ability to live in the town in the way that we should be able to and it shouldn't, we don't need a bylaw, it doesn't have to be retroactive to take action. We should be able to address companies that are not good actors, that are not good neighbors and make sure that they are acting appropriately in our town. And who is taking on that responsibility? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Gillespie. I live at 114 Taylor Street. When I first opened the warrant, the special town meeting report, I thought, "Uh-oh, I live at 114 Taylor," which is that stripe section in the bottom, close to the intersection of 495 and Route 2, and I thought, "Well, what is all this going to mean for me?" I did digest the material. In fact, I sent an email to the town planning person. He responded right away and helped me understand what this is all about and I stand in support of this article, even though it's an overlay district that is in my neighborhood and that is for many of the reasons that people have expressed tonight. This is, I was thinking, oftentimes you hear, "Perfect is the enemy of good" and I think what we have here is a good. There may be some things we want to change and we can do that. This amendment article, as I read it, is an entire replacement of an existing bylaw article. So while there are a few amendments, this is entirely new article as a replacement and as you go through it, while it may not be perfect, I do believe it's good and for the reasons that many people have brought forward, it's a step in the right direction for making sure that the town is able to set our own destiny when it comes to these changes, as the gentleman referred to. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I have a couple of questions for Jeff.
Do you have questions for the planning board?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay.
Jeff, as I, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Jeff, as I understand it, this is as restrictive as state law would allow the planning board to be given the current regulations. Is that true?
We cannot restrict it further without a town ballot.
I understand that.
Which we could elect to do.
And has any, well, let me get back to that, but currently, without this bylaw, can't a cultivation area apply for a license where in town?
Anywhere, anywhere within, I, I want to, can, can I address?
Can you please?
The issue of the common, which is clearly not included in the overlay district based on this map. I don't know where that came from. This actually is the same map that we had before, less industrial B properties which are along the, well, up across from the gravel pit. So, what is your question? You have to repeat it.
I'm trying to help you here.
Okay.
Okay, the map says Littleton Common, so it's misleading and people look.
The map, the map says Littleton Common, just as a, a map would say Littleton Common.
Right.
But the stripes, the stripes actually refer to across 495.
I understand that, but looking at your map... But looking at your map, if people don't understand the geography of town, and aren't familiar with the roads as much as you and I are, it looks like you're including Littleton Common. So I was trying to help point out that you are not.
Thank you.
Also, you're saying that almost anywhere in town, someone could apply for a license currently, and this is much more restrictive than what we currently have. Is that true?
There, anywhere where we have the stripes, could, a cultivation site could be located. Now, that could include outdoor cultivation, which is even more concerning for odor, because there's no way to control it. There's no HVAC. So that was a consideration. Towns out west have had a big problem with that.
It is a huge problem. As a real estate broker, I can tell you it really affects your property values, and it's worse than a piggery for smell, as far as I'm concerned. But coming back to this, so this is as restrictive as you can possibly make it by town law without us doing a vote. Is there any impetus started on getting that on a town vote for, say, spring?
Well, the selectman would have to bring that forward.[1172.65][1172.65](laughter)
Okay.
And any, do we need to get a citizen petition together? What do we need to do? I mean, we have a business that is currently in use, we can't get rid of it, we can't do much with it, but can we restrict further and get that vote before?
Cheryl, I want to make one comment on this timing thing. We could have elected not to do anything, and just make this marijuana bylaw, you know, But we felt that we're vulnerable until there is a townwide ballot. And so we elected, and we would have brought it forward before now, except we had other things, like the MBTA communities, et cetera, that took up a lot of bandwidth. So while this process started, really, a couple of years ago, and we engaged our town council, Tom Harrington, who has on his staff a marijuana or a cannabis expert, who, I'd like to assure everyone, actually wrote the bylaw with expert care. And, you know, I have to say that I resent the, you know, the implication that we just went, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." This was done, this is technical, there's a state process. The state process is in flux constantly, and we employed an expert in this process to revamp the bylaw.
I understand that, and I think that this, I want to support this article, because I think it does restrict things as much as we legally can, and a step in the right direction. And I don't think it would have in any way stopped us from doing a town vote to eliminate further activity or further cultivation in town. And I see Mr. Decost is standing up, because I've put you guys on the spot, I'm sorry.
That's why we get paid the big bucks. Chuck Decost, Select Board. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Certainly, we could put something on a ballot. There's some reasons behind why the Select Board didn't take a position on this, and there's, many of the changes that were presented by town council are appropriate, and get us kind of in line with the Cannabis Control Commission and kind of what they're mandating or their guidance is. But in looking at the map, which seems to be where everybody's kind of focusing, nobody's even mentioned the fact that much of, to the south, I guess it is, that whole entire area is where we were at town meeting last year to vote for residential MBTA communities housing. And that's, I don't think that changed personally, I'm speaking for myself, not for the Select Board right now, but I think that's an overstep as far as the zoning map is concerned. But we can certainly have discussions or conversations if the town so chooses to restrict further. That's not the position of the Select Board at this time. So that would have to be something that would be, would come to us through conversations with residents and see, you know, kind of take the, tonight, we'll kind of take the temperature of the room a little bit, and we'll read the room and act appropriately.
Okay. So I would urge everyone to vote for this, simply because it helps restrict and helps us control it as much as we can right now. And I would urge people, if we can get a town ballot, to limit further cultivation in the future, that we vote that way, because it really affects our property values. Whether you use marijuana personally or not, I'm a big fan of NIMBY. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Jenny Boyer, again, 18 Boxborough Road. So for the last two years, I've worked as a mental health therapist in a clinic that services teenagers. It's partial hospitalization, so it's just one step down from them having to live somewhere full-time. In these two years, I saw the effects of marijuana use in teenagers and their mental health, and have studied it extensively, including research. And it does affect their brains in really large and permanent, long-lasting ways, including lowering IQ. And you can have hallucinations for some people on this, and also, what it can do is initially give you relaxation, and then you can have a rebound effect that actually makes you more anxious. Those are some of the things that I've seen, not to mention just addictions. And I've heard some talking, saying, "Well, they can't get it until they're 21," right? And so I don't know a lot about, like, these zoning things. I've been really head-down in getting my education the last few years. But as, like, as you're thinking about these zonings and things like this, how many shops to have in town, and how, where to put them, I just want to encourage you to know and to think that where we have it, it will get into the hands of our children. Because what I saw time and time again, just many times, you know, when we were growing up and things were illegal, you have people who legally can buy it, and then they go to our children and sell it. And the more of that we have in our town boundaries, the more that it will end up in the hands of our children. And as someone who has five children, three right now, that are in the high school and middle school, there is a vaping problem. My high schooler says that when she goes into the high school bathroom, she can't breathe now, because the vape is so thick. And my middle schoolers are stating that they see vaping at the middle school level. So please, just think of that, how you're zoning, how much you're allowing in. And as a parent, and as a mental health therapist, like, please restrict as much as you can. Thank you.[1577.71][1577.71](applause)
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to proceed to a vote. Keeping in mind that it's a zoning amendment question, and it requires a two-thirds majority for passage. So all those in favor of the motion, as read and as amended with the word "impassable" replacing "impossible," please signify by clicking yes on your handheld device. And if you're not in favor, you can click no on that handheld device, and we'll give The voting period has ended. And there were 188 votes cast, 139 in favor, 49 opposed, and that does meet the two-thirds majority rule, and the article is passed.[1664.11][1664.11](applause) Thank you very much. I declare the vote. And we'll move forward then to Article 10, where you'll recall the Conservation Commission will not be offering a motion on Article 10 tonight on the article to transfer the care, custody, and control of Lot 107A at the Nagark Hill Orchard from the Select Board to the Conservation Commission. So Madam Clerk, please record that no affirmative action was taken on Article 10. And then, you'll recall, 11 and 12 were voted much earlier as part of the consent calendar, and that brings us to the end of the warrant. Before I entertain a motion to dissolve, I'd just like to thank the town administration for their help with this meeting, also the Select Board for their help as well. They have, not yet, and then the Finance Committee, obviously, Finance Director, the town clerk and her team always do a great job, and they've got an even bigger job a week from tonight.[1730.36][1730.36](applause) And the folks at LCTV, and everyone who've contributed to making this town meeting a success. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve, Jerry.[1743.82][1743.82](audience clapping) All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, I presume?[1750.42][1750.42](applause) The special town meeting is dissolved. Thank you.